Please rise for the arrival of Deputy Secretary of Defense, the Honorable Ashton B. Carter, and the Under-Secretary of Defense Comptroller, the Honorable Robert F. Hale.
Please be seated. So, good afternoon, and welcome to our Audit Town Hall. I appreciate your being here. This is an important topic, and one we are working on hard, and so I'm especially pleased that we have with us to open this session today the Deputy Secretary of Defense. He has a lot of jobs in his role as Supporting and Supporting Secretary Panetta. He is the Department -- one of them is that he is the Department's Chief Management Officer. And in that role, he has responsibility over audit and many other things, and he's been very helpful, giving me advice, convening a D-MAG to help us get the services together on this issue. So, I'm glad to have him here today, and I don't think he needs a lot more introduction. With that, I'll give you the Honorable Ash Carter, Deputy Secretary of Defense.
Well, thanks very much, Bob. I see Beth McGrath here. Welcome there, partner. And I, looking around the audience here, I know almost each and every one of you. I consider that a great privilege, in one way or another, we've worked together, and that's terrific, and I thank you for what you do each and every day. There are 240 of you, or something like that, in this room, and then another 270, I'm told, executives joining us online in the Pentagon Channel. So, welcome, and thank you. Topic is audit readiness, and it does not a really kind of snappy thing, but it is -- but good -- it is a part of good financial management, and good financial management is a necessary piece of executing our strategy. And let me kind of sketch that logic for you. This is about the most consequential time for this department in a decade. And the reason for that is twofold. One is that we're coming out of an era of necessary preoccupation, really riveting preoccupation, on two wars of a particular kind, in Iraq and Afghanistan, and the war on terrorism as well. Absolutely necessary things to do, and the war on terrorism will go on probably forever in one way or another, although we've gotten much better at it. But Iraq has wound down, and Afghanistan will wind down over time, and so it's time for us to kind of look up out of the foxhole of that period and ask ourselves what's next, and what are the problems, the security problems, that will determine this nation's future and this world's future? And we would need to take that look, that fresh look at what we do, even if we had all the money that we want. But, of course, we're not going to get all the money that we want, which is the second thing that impinges upon us now in the form of the Budget Control Act, which, just to remind you, required us to subtract from our expectations of just a year ago that famous $487 billion from our plans, which was the difference integrated over 10 years between what we thought we were going to get a year and a half ago, and what we understood after the Budget Control Act, we were going to get. A very consequential adjustment by any standards, about 9% of the total. If you add to that the diminution in OCO as a consequence of the winding out of the war in Iraq, and the slowly -- don't forget, we're still in Afghanistan big time, but you can see diminished level of activity there, out a couple of years from now. You put all that together, and you look at total spending, base plus OCO, and that is as much of a downturn as the country has experienced since the end of the Cold War in aggregate terms, base plus OCO. So, those are the two big circumstances that we're trying to meet, and better management of our enterprise, what I used to call when I was AT&amp;L, better buying power, getting a better value for the taxpayer's dollar is essential in two ways. First of all, we have booked, God help us, $211 billion worth of efficiencies in the last few years, which is a very good and healthy thing to do, but that's -- those are efficiencies we have to earn. We have booked them, but we have to earn them managerially. That's an important thing to do in its own right, because we can't be cutting only tooth in this period. In fact, what we'd like to do is not cut tooth at all and deal with the budget pressures that we're given, and that's not going to be entirely possible. We'd like to make that as possible as we can. And second, we want to retain the confidence of the taxpayer that the money they are giving us is being well-spent for their defense. So, both for the substantive reason and to retain the confidence of the taxpayer, we need to be good custodians of the taxpayer's dollar, and that's where audibility comes in. That's one of the ways that we are accountable for the money we're given by the taxpayer, and that we show that we're accountable for it. Both very necessary things. Auditable financial statements ensure the accuracy of our financial information, and we need accurate financial information to make budgeting decisions, to make decisions about the capabilities that the country needs to defend itself going forward. That's the logic that gets you there, and, of course, if you work as I do for the Secretary of Defense, you don't only need logic, you only need him wanting you to do something. That's good enough, and he definitely wants us to do this, and I'll tell you why. You know, I think it comes from his background, first of all, at OMB, and so when this subject first arose, and he first became Secretary of Defense, I know Bob will remember this, I mean, it immediately caught his attention, as something of substantive and symbolic importance. And then he's had so much experience, Chief of Staff to President, a Member of Congress, Director of CIA, and so in all those places, he's seen the managerial challenges of government through a lot of different lenses, and so he's about the most reliable guide I know to what you ought to pay attention to in this building and this town, and he immediately seized upon audit readiness as a goal we had to not just talk about, but actually go out and seize. We have a little video that proves what I just said, namely that the big boss really wants us to do this, so let's watch him, and then we'll return to me in a moment. We're going to do this as the "Here's Johnny" kind of thing.
The Department of Defense has been mandated to reduce the defense budget by $487 billion over the next decade. To maintain our military strength in this budget environment, we need to do things more efficiently and more effectively. That means we must eliminate duplication and reduce overhead and get a better handle on our financial controls. DoD, I'm sorry to say, is the only major federal agency that cannot pass an audit today. I intend to change that, but to do that, I need your help. Your help in three areas. First, we need to maintain better information about our expenses. Everything from supply requisitions to contracts needs to be checked for accuracy and completeness, and entered into the right financial systems. Second, I need you to treat every dollar you spend as if it was your own. Before you order more supplies or equipment, make sure that it's truly necessary. And third, after 10 years of war, we really don't have a handle on all our property, equipment, and supplies. Help me by building accurate, complete, and reliable records and turning in unused equipment. The bottom line is this: I need you to manage your books as tightly as you manage your operational mission. Our effort to become audit-ready must be a department-wide priority. In the coming weeks, you and your commanders will hear more about audit readiness, and your commanders and managers will receive a checklist to help meet this challenge. All key personnel need to be involved in meeting the checklist requirements, not just comptrollers, not just resource managers. This is the right thing to do for all of us at DoD, so that we can help the American people ensure that we're spending their dollars right. Thank you for your work helping achieve this goal, and thank you for your commitment to protecting the security of our nation.
Well, there it is, and I just, two things caught my ear. The first is that we need to spend the taxpayers' money in the service of the department as though it were our own, and make that evident. I think that's the first principle, and the second thing he said that kind of caught my ear was that liken audit readiness to operational readiness, treat it as seriously as we would operational readiness. So, what do we do? First of all, we need a plan, and we have that plan, which requires us to focus first on the information we use and need most, namely budgetary information and the counts and locations of assets, and then a cost-effective approach to achieving audibility for the remaining information. That's our strategy. As far as specific goals are concerned, we are committed to, and we've said this publicly, we have to do it, to achieving audit readiness in our budget statement by 2014. It's not that long from now. Achieving full audit readiness by 2017, and to achieving a number of interim goals, which we set for ourselves at a D-MAG, as Bob mentioned a few months ago. We have put aside resources to make this possible. This is not free, and we understand that, and we will fund independent audits as needed in addition, and we've established a governance process to achieve our objectives, and I give a lot of credit to Bob Hale in that connection. But, and I think the Secretary said this, this is not something that it can be left to the comptroller community, the execution of it. Now, you don't often hear that from comptrollers, actually, but in this, they're saying it in this case, and it's really true. This is one of these cases of decentralized execution. It's a retail business. You've got to get the word out there so that everybody at every level can do their part. That's the trick here. That's the trick for an execution. That's why we've asked all of the military departments to issue their own guidance to their own people, why the checklist that the Secretary mentioned is so important, because you're trying to get people who are -- don't do this for a living, but who are necessary to execution, to do what they need to do, and that's in many, many, many hundreds of locations, at many, many hundreds of different command levels. So, it is by nature a decentralized execution task. That's the hardest thing, so we can't just stand up here and ask that it be so. It has to perfuse the institution in order to get it done. But I don't have any doubt we can succeed. I think we're on the right path to do so. It'll be a tremendous accomplishment, and I think something that we'll -- we can be justifiably proud of in a few years when we do do it. So, it's in our hands now, all of us, and many others out there in the field whom we need to inspire and assist in doing what they need to do over the next couple of years. So, I look forward to working with you in this tremendous project. I appreciate your involvement in it. I appreciate your dedication to it, as does Secretary Panetta. So, let's get at it, and thanks very much.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Carter, for being here and kicking this off, and I want to welcome all of you, both the ones that are in this room, and there are a few seats around here. If anybody would like to sit down, feel free to come on up here. Standing room only for an audit is not what your Audit Town Hall, not what you normally expect. Also, welcome to all of you that are joining us online. Couple special welcomes. Beth McGrath is here, our Deputy Chief Management Officer. Beth, thank you. All three of our Assistant Secretaries of the Services for Financial Management and Comptroller are here, and they are definitely my partners in crime, Mark Easton, Joe Quinn, in my office, who leading this effort. So, I'm sure many of you are asking, some of you are real terse in saying, "Why am I here?" And some of you are a little more gracious, perhaps, in saying, "What can I, what exactly do I need to do to accomplish my part in this, in translating the request from the Secretary and the deputy into reality?" So, first, I want to review just a little bit more about our plan, a little bit more specifically, and then I'll try to answer those questions as best I can. First, as the Deputy said, we have a focused plan to -- this is a big job, there's a lot of changes that have to be made. We got to take this thing one step, one bite at a time. We'll concentrate first on the information we most use to manage, namely budgetary information, and also the counts and location of our assets, because they are key to our warfighters and our business success. We'll look to get an opinion on what's called the Statement of Budgetary Resources for General Funds, SBR, or have it audit-ready by 2014. So, just what is this SBR thing? It's essentially a statement of all of the status of all of the department's funds. It's the funds that we received, it's what was obligated and what was spent. Now, if you look at the statement itself, it could well be written in Greek. Frankly, it is not useful. I tried many times to fix it, but it's specified for us in its format. So, I wouldn't commend that as a management tool, but the data that underlie that statement are used every day in this department because it's our obligation status data and much more. We'll also focus on the counts and locations of our assets. Auditors call that existence and completeness, and again, that's key to our warfighters. You need to know where the weapons are and the bombs, but our business managers also need to know how many spare parts we have. We need to have an idea, a good idea of our inventory of buildings. We've already made some important progress in this area. We're not starting from scratch. We have detailed plans, as Ash said. We've set aside resources. We have a governance strategy. We're working closely with Congress, because frankly, they are on our case about this, and we're trying to reassure them we're seeking to make progress. We've set up some long-term and interim goals, and I'm not going to spend the time to go over them now, but we definitely need those as benchmarks for how we're doing. We're working hard to install new financial systems in all of the military departments and the defense agencies, and I particularly appreciate the help of Beth McGrath, as well as the FM Assistant Secretaries and many of you in installing G-Feb's in the Army, Navy ERP in the Department of the Navy, DEEMs in the Air Force, and the Defense Agency Initiative in many of our defense agencies. Some organizations are already there in terms of what we call the Financial Improvement and Audit Readiness FIRE efforts, and I want to recognize them briefly. The Corps of Engineers has fully auditable statements, DFAST does, as does DECA and DCAA. The Tricare Management Agency has worked hard on trust funds. DISA, the latest entrant to the auditable family, has a clean opinion now on its working capital fund statement. One organization in particular, the Marine Corps, is making major progress on what's our first large goal, that is, the Statement of Budgetary Resources. I want to thank the Marine Corps for their continued battling the challenges somewhat of the unknown. Since they were the first, we've uncovered a lot of problems, and although we're not there yet, I believe this goal is in sight. I like to say we've asked the Marine Corps to take a lot of beachheads for the United States in our history. Now, I'm asking them to take a financial beachhead, and I really do appreciate their efforts. Also, there are many other specific accomplishments. Our so-called appropriations received, our funds control system has been, was audited in all the military departments last year, received a clean opinion, Air Force on funds balanced with Treasury, Army on its new G-Feb system, the Wave 1, Navy and Air Force on military equipment. But all that said, we've got a long way to go. I think if we learned one thing from the Marine Corps audit, it's that there are frankly more problems than we had anticipated in terms of getting to auditable opinions. So, let me turn back to these two near-term goals, this SBR thing, Statement of Budgetary Resources, and Existence and Completeness, and talk more about what I need you to do, and I'll try to be as specific as we can. So, now, on the Statement of Budgetary Resources, you may be saying to yourself, "This has got to be the comptroller's problem," right? This is not my problem. Well, if you're saying that, you're wrong, because in order to have sound financial information that we can and get an auditable statement, we must have sound input information from personnelists, from logisticians, acquisition experts, and many others. Essentially, what we've got to be able to show is that, to a material degree, each of our millions of financial transactions are correct and can be documented. That means for an invoice that we paid, we've got to be able to show we received the goods, we've got to be able to show that we have a contract and that we paid the contracted price. We've got to be sure the information is recorded in our, in the statement, or in the systems of record and recorded accurately. If you're a personnel manager, this means being sure that we have required documentation to show that Sergeant Hale really is a sergeant, or that somebody in authority has certified that, and that the information in the personnel systems is being transferred correctly to the pay systems, and the pay is correct. Now, some of that job is DFAST, but a lot of it is the personnel community that is going to have to be able to verify the personnel information. If you're a logistics manager, that means for audibility, for supplies, say, ordered from DLA or from Air Mobility Command, we've got to be able to show documents authorizing the amount, the date, and the funding for the order. If you're an acquisition manager, it means, among other things, audibility means, among other things, providing documentation that proves that all contracts and related modifications have been recorded in the proper financial records, and that the contracts are recorded for orders that remain as valid requirements. On the Existence and Completeness goal, this is the counts and locations of our assets, we've got to be sure that our property systems of record contain records for all major property, and it's not good enough that somebody's got an Excel sheet at a base that says what they've got. It's got to be in the system of record, or it won't be viewed as auditable, and that these records have to be materially correct. In an organization as far-flung as DoD, and especially one at war, that's a major challenge. However, in an organization at war, I'd also say that meeting this challenge, knowing where our assets are and how many we have, is very important. We regularly see savings as services audit and improve the information they have about spare parts and other assets, and therefore can order fewer of them. Now, I'd like to note that perfection is not required for an audit. We will leave that to a higher authority. What we have to do in an audit is to be materially correct, and essentially it means you can have some errors, so long as it's not fraud. You can have some errors, a small fraction, probably a few percent. Also, audits don't try to establish that every transaction was cost-effective. That's certainly the goal we strive for, but the audits are looking to document that the payment was made as promised, and that the payments are recorded accurately in a timely manner. So, what do each of you need to do to achieve audit readiness? Now, I can't be as specific as I like, because you're covering so many different areas or parts of the Department of Defense, but I'll try to tell you what I would like you to do. I'd like you to go back to your office and ask yourself some questions regarding the portion of our audit efforts that involve you. First, do I know what I need to accomplish to do my part in the audit readiness effort? If the answer is yes, you're done with that question. If the answer is no, I'd ask you to first turn to your own staff. We have been trying to work with your staffs, and we, as all the service FM's, my staff, and many others, and ask them if they know what you need to do. If they don't know, please don't stop there. Contact your comptroller or resource manager, and if they're not sure, ask them to work up the chain either to your departmental comptroller or to my office. Figuring out what you need to know will require an assessment of your current business processes and the policies that we currently use in light of what we're going to have to do to be auditable. How close are those processes and the controls to a level? Fidelity of controls that were needed for an audit is a question we've got to answer. And you're going to have to perform a certain amount of testing here. It's not good enough to say, "I think this is working fine." You're going to have to demonstrate that to an independent auditor, and they are going to want to see documentation, and before we hire an auditor, because they're expensive, we want to be sure we have it, so I'd ask that as you work through plans, you look to test on a statistical basis if you can, but at least some kind of testing to reassure yourself you have the information that you need. Once you need to, you know what you need to do, I need you to ask a second question. Do I have a specific plan for getting that done? Again, if the answer is no, then I'd ask you to task your staff or yourself to create such a plan, and I'd ask you to do it, say, within the next two months. Push the audit readiness message down to all those who work for you. You might want to have your own all-hands meeting, or do it at a staff meeting. We're taping this session. If it's useful, use it. Get your functional and financial management teams together. Again, this can't just be a comptroller effort. It has to involve everybody. And answer some questions with the help of this commander's checklist that we, either your services have put out, or is on our website in comptroller land. Where are we with regard to audit readiness in the portions that you are concerned with? What are the major roadblocks that you see, and you're probably going to hear of some significant ones? What support do I need? And who else should I be meeting with? You probably are going to have to reach out beyond your own area in order to make this happen. You've got to improve controls and documentations for business events, and we've got some training. If it's useful, contact my office, and we'll try to make it available to you. That'll be more specific about what you need to do, or you also can use this checklist that you've either gotten from your comptrollers, or again, is on our website. And I need you to review the plans you're working personally, to be sure it makes sense and it can be executed. Again, if you're unsure how to proceed in this area, I know I'm being general, but I can't be specific for each of you, go to your comptroller or resource manager and ask for help, and ask them to work up the chain if they don't know. Third, I need you to ask whether you have the resources to carry out this plan, and I know this is a sensitive question, especially with a comptroller here to be answering. If the answer is no, I need you to first try to reprioritize internally. I don't need to tell you that times are tight budgetarily. You've seen from the Secretary of Defense, you've heard personally from the deputy, this is a high priority. I need you to try to find the assets within your own organization, or at least the next layer up if you can. If you can't, then I would ask you to contact your comptroller and resource management folks, again, up channel to higher level. We have set aside some funds. They're pretty limited, and they've got to spread across a variety of tasks, but we have set aside some funds, and if this is an area where we need to help, we will do our best. Fourth, I need you to plan on check on progress regularly. I'd say at least monthly, more often initially, so that we actually get started. Use this checklist, again, on our website, or the one that has been sent to you by the military comptrollers, and remember, it's not enough to just feel like this is okay, that we're running okay. You've got to be able to demonstrate that to an independent auditor, and it will mean that you'll have to have backup information, whether it's forms, or, and they'll have to be signed and properly filled out in order to justify the transactions that we've made. To sum up, figure out what you need to do, create a specific plan to make it happen, look around for the resources, preferably internally, or go find them if you can, and monitor that plan regularly. I essentially need you to take responsibility for this as managers, and I know I'm talking to a whole group of highly experienced managers, so I don't need to harp on that too much, and to make it a high priority. These tasks will not always be well-defined in the beginning. I'm well aware of that, and that's part of where your skills come in. I'm going to need you to go from what is a goal to, and turn it into the specifics that you can actually execute, and you'll need to monitor progress regularly to make sure it's happening, and it's going to take several years. There are enough problems with our business processes and enough changes that, in most cases, it isn't going to happen overnight. If each of you accomplishes these tasks that I've outlined, we will succeed in our financial improvement and audit readiness efforts. The opposite is also true, and I think it is clear to me that the success of this is in your hands, in the hands of many others in the Department of Defense, but you're going to be the key leaders. We've got to get this out of the comptroller community and into the hands of our commanders and our senior managers. So, I'm counting on your dedication and management skills to translate the goals you heard Secretary Panetta express and Secretary Carter express into reality. And with that, I'm going to stop, and I will do my best, at this point, to take questions and answer them. I like to wander around, but because we've got people online, I think it's best if I stay here so that the microphone is available. And hearing isn't my strongest suit, so when you stand up, I hope there's microphones. Either that, you're going to have to speak up so I can hear you.
Yes, sir. There are microphones. If we could get you to raise your hands if you have any questions, again, so the folks online can hear the question as well. While the ideas are percolating, we've got a couple in advance. I'll read one for you, sir. A question came in, Mr. Hale. We've heard for years that we need new systems to become audit-ready. We've heard for years that we need new systems to become audit-ready, since many of the new systems are still years from full deployment. What makes us think that we can achieve audit readiness using our very old systems?
Well, it's a good question, and yes, in many cases, we do need new systems, especially to sustain audit readiness, but they themselves are not all of the solution. I think something I've learned, it's become more clear to me in the last three and a half years in this job, our business processes are at least as much of a problem. The systems sometimes help correct that because they force change in business processes, but they alone won't do it. We've got new systems in various stages of deployment, depending on the department. Where we haven't, where we won't have them in place, and notably perhaps in the Air Force, but some others as well, we are actively pursuing workarounds that allow us to get to the 2014 goal for the Statement of Budgetary Resources, and I think they're doable. There's some risk in them, but I believe they're doable. So I think we can do this, and we need to get at it. We need to keep working on the systems as well, because they will help us both get there if we haven't made it yet and sustain this at a reasonable cost once you get them in place. But I don't want to wait. I think, and we've been at this, Congress passed the Government Management Reform Act in 1994, which is the law that required auditable financial statements. So we've been at it 17 years, or at least 17 years have passed. I wouldn't say we've been at it, but 17 years have passed. And we are, as you heard Carter and Panetta say, the last major federal agency. The spotlight has shown on us. I was hoping the Department of Homeland Security got out of the auditless lifeboat this year. I was hoping they'd wait till I was gone, but they didn't. So we're the last ones. The spotlight is showing on us, both in terms of Congress and elsewhere. So we've got to get at it, and I think that we have workarounds to get around the systems until we have them in place. Any other questions? I know there are a couple others. Come on, I can't have answered everything, guys. Talk to me. Somebody's got to be worried about it. Anybody think, how many people think they can do this? Show of hands. All right, so somebody didn't raise your hand. So somebody talk to me that doesn't think they can do it, and, you know, I won't bite. I know this is hard. What's your biggest concern? Talk to me. Money? Anybody think they got, anybody got money problems? All right, I'd like to hear that. Now, this is my kind of crowd. Any concerns about this? It'll help me if you talk to me. Aw, come on, guys. You have to go back to work. All right, there we go. There's a brave soul. Go ahead. We've got a microphone coming here.
For Marine, I don't need a mic, but that's all right.
I can do that. One of the concerns I have is, this is a major area, coming out of business, you know, this, we just took this for granted, but we've got a lot going on as we redefine our strategic military commitments and things like that, and what I'm concerned is that how many top priorities are we going to have during reset, during drawdown, during facing new asymmetric threats? You know, how is this going to tie to the strategy, and how is this going to balance when the warfighter wants, and then, you know, focus gets shifted back to the next new crisis?
That's a good question, and I mean, I'll try not to give you a flip answer. Our strategy has some warfighting goals, things like no longer planning for large, prolonged stability operations such as conducted Iraq that allowed us a large drawdown in our ground forces or to plan for that, and the refocus to Asia-Pacific and the Middle East. But it also has another important aspect, and that is to make disciplined use of our defense resources. And indeed, that's the first thing that we feel we need to do, because I think we owe it to the taxpayers, and we've got to persuade the Congress that we have stretched these dollars just as far as we can. Some of that are the explicit efficiencies that many of you are working on, but I got to tell you, if I picked one single reason for wanting to do audits, it would be public confidence. I think it is very destructive of public confidence in us that we can't do what every viable public corporation in America has to do, and that is achieve an auditable financial statement. Frankly, I don't think our financial records are that bad, because if they were that bad, we'd be paying the wrong vendors, and we'd have Wholesale Anti-Deficiency Act, and we're not seeing any of that. But we can't demonstrate that to an independent set of auditors, and it's a killer on the hill. I mean, it's very hard to come back when somebody says, "Well, why do I believe anything you're saying, Mr. Hale, if you can't even pass an audit test?" So it is highly corrosive of public confidence. I think in turn, we need that confidence to get the resources we need for the strategy. So it's not the only priority, and you've got a good point. We're trying to do an awful lot, but I think it has to be a fairly high one. Any others? That was a good question. I'll take a second good question. Why don't you read me and see if we've got a candidate there?
This is probably very relevant to this crowd. You've asked for each SES to have an appropriate or relevant performance element in their plans that supports this very important enterprise goal. How would you see the performance review boards using these elements in evaluating overall performance that drives bonus decisions?
Well, I mean, the SES performance plans usually give percentage, I mean, they give goals and percentage weights, and at least in the times that I have done these ratings, I mean, you're rated by your supervisors, and then there's a weighted average. So the math will work out. I wouldn't expect that for the great majority of our members, the SES, this is going to be a high percentage goal. It will be, I mean, the high percentage goals are the customer satisfaction and mission. For some, this will be mission, but for many, it won't. It will be one of the smaller ones, but I would like it there because I think that it highlights the fact this is important, and I hope that it will remind each of you and your supervisors as you're going through the review process to ask yourself, "How we doing?" And I don't need to tell this group of experienced managers that that's how you get things done in this organization and many others. I think maybe particularly in larger, I like to liken progress in large organizations like the Department of Defense to pushing a very heavy stone across sandpaper. If you stop, it stops. It's not inertia. Inertia means you get the thing going, it keeps going. No, this is friction. I mean, there's so much going on, as the gentleman just said, that, you know, it will take your constant attention to this task, or at least periodic attention to this task, if we're going to cut through the clutter and actually make progress, because we've got to change the way we do business, and there's nothing that's a whole lot harder. Anything else? Yes, sir.
So we go to a lot of meetings, and we talk about this a whole lot. I said, "We go to a lot of meetings, and we talk about this a whole lot." I'd like to know what metrics you're going to use to gauge our progress toward audit readiness and how you plan to communicate them to us as a community.
Okay, I'm probably better on the first one, but in some sense, audit readiness is easy to measure because we're actually hiring auditors. Ultimately, it is an independent public auditor coming in and saying we have a clean opinion on the Statement of Budgetary Resources. But we've tried also to define a lot of sub-metrics, and you can find them on our website, and there I mentioned a few of them briefly. Things like the Army, for example, is doing a series of tests on its G-Feb systems. There are mini-audits of G-Feb, the new financial system. We'll actually hire an auditor to go out and say, "Hey, is this, are we using the system, and is it actually auditable?" And we will get an opinion, and we'll also get advice from them, because you rarely, they rarely come in and say, "You're perfect." Essentially, never, probably. They'll come in and say, "You need to do the following things differently," and we can learn from them. It gets harder as we get down to the level of many of you who are supporting pieces of this, and there I don't have an easy answer on the metrics. I'd ask you to think about whether they're metrics. If you're a personnelist and you own, I don't know, the Air Force Personnel System, I would hope you could establish metrics like, all right, I'm going to do a random test by four months from now of personnel records to be sure that I can demonstrate that they are accurate, and I've asked my comptroller or others to tell me what an auditor is going to want in order to demonstrate that they're accurate. That'd be a good sub-goal, I would think, for personnel types. I'm not sure I can state those widely. In some ways, I need you to define those goals with the help of audit experts. Am I answering your question? No is an okay answer. I'll try out.
I'll take the no, but I'll make an observation here. So audit readiness is an emergent property of a system. Each one of us, whether you're a procurement person or a personnelist or a resource manager, can certainly gauge a set of sub-criteria, whether we're meeting them to get to that goal, but at some point, somebody's got to look at the whole and say, "The sum of these things adds up to audit readiness," and I think for us to lead that charge, we need to have an understanding of how the department is doing at the emergent level.
I mean, we've started doing a FIRE monthly, I think, is it monthly, Mark, that we're putting out a newsletter, and maybe that needs to go more widely. I think it's on our website, and maybe that needs to go more widely, that talks in broader terms about where we are. I mean, for example, it'll talk about where the Marine Corps is on its Statement of Budgetary Resources. As our other services get closer to asserting audit readiness, I would hope with their help, we could begin to say, "All right, here's the steps they still have to take." Maybe that will begin to address your point, which I think is a good one. We need to, we need to tell you where the hole is. So, Mark, can I ask you to look at, perhaps through the service FM's? We ought to make that website more known. You can Google under Secretary of Defense, Comptroller of Defense, you'll probably get it, and make sure that that's available, because that's a good question and a good point. Other questions or thoughts? Anybody see any showstoppers here? I know there are. This is hard. Okay, we got any other written questions?
Yes, sir, we do. There's one here that talks about somebody who's been in this business for a long time. Says, "Mr. Hale, I've had responsibility for resources in the past, and I feel we had good record-keeping and could support our budget execution. Is the audit looking for something more, or is something somewhere else in the process broken?"
I mean, basically, an audit wants, although the specifics are arcane, they want you to be able to demonstrate that the transactions in our financial system are accurate to a material degree. Again, perfection is not required, but it's got to be probably within a few percent. That's going to vary depending on the transaction. If it's a, if it is an invoice we're paying, they're going to want you to see, to see the invoice. They're going to want to see a contract that says, "Yes, I agreed to buy that," and the invoice should match the contract or be trackable to it, and they're going to want to see a receiving report or some indication that we actually got that stuff. I mean, that, in a way, that's what we should, we should have all of that before we ever pay the bill. Our problem, I think, isn't that we're not doing it. In many cases, it's that we can't produce the documentation in a timely fashion, because an auditor comes in, we do 170 million accounting transactions a year in the Department of Defense. So they come in and take a sample, and it's a small sample, but it's potentially, it's certainly thousands, and it could be tens of thousands, depending on how good our, how much they trust our systems, and then they want us to demonstrate for each of those this information. Well, it can be overwhelming really quickly if we don't have a system for getting that and if we're not keeping the data in some fashion that's, that makes it accessible. And I'll pick on the personnel side again. It's not good enough to, for DFAST to show, although I think they can, show that the system is, given the input it has, is paying people correctly, both for civilians, and we're still working on it, but we're getting close on the military side. We also have to demonstrate that the information coming in is accurate, and so we're going to need to know that there's a form somewhere that says, "Yes, this person is a sergeant with 12 years of experience," or whatever, and that the other information that is being fed into the pay system is accurate. And they're going to do a sample of, again, potentially thousands of those records and ask us to produce that. For the most part, I think, and I believe the personnel folks I've talked to believe it's correct, but believing's not good enough, we're going to have to go and sample those systems and be sure that we can produce that documentation reasonably quickly when an auditor asks us for it. And that's true in all of the areas, some of which I don't understand well enough probably to define well for you, but it's true in acquisition and logistics and all the areas where we work, that we're going to have to produce fairly quickly documentation. Again, I don't think our records are terrible. I think if they were, we'd have problems, far-reaching problems, but I do think that we're not able to demonstrate that, and it is corrosive of public confidence in us, and we need to do it. In some cases, our business practices also aren't auditable, even though they may be efficient, and I'll pick on one. We do something called bulk obligations of military personnel. We manage them centrally. We obligate the money in large amounts, which is quite efficient as a way to get people paid, but an auditor is going to want to track that back to who got paid, to the eaches, and in some cases, we haven't been able to do that. It was one of the problems we ran into with the Marine Corps audit, and we had to change our business practices so that we could track back to that information and provide what the auditors, what the auditors required. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Back.
How many years back do you anticipate this audit going?
Yes, that is a very good question. Well, it varies with the statement. On the Statement of Budgetary Resources, we're going to focus, I think, increasingly on current year, because we'll do a lot better there. In order to get, in order to get the whole statement, we will eventually have to do the beginning balance, and that will go back, it depends on the nature of the money. In some cases, if it's a, if it's a ship, it could be five years to obligate it and five years to expend, it could go back 10 years. And we are going to definitely have problems producing documentation back that far. So in some form or another, we will, we will define a plan that focuses on the current year and, I think, work toward auditable beginning balance. Some of the services may be able to do it quickly, and if they can, great, but if they have difficulty, I think that we'll take it a year at a time. If you get the current year right, then the next year, that year was right. You've documented that for the beginning balance. After a couple of years, the amounts will get small, and eventually, materiality will come to our aid, and they will no longer be material, and so it won't take 10 years certainly to get there, but it'll probably take a while. It's a long-winded way of saying it's going to vary with the statement, and in the case of SBR, we'll probably have to take it in chunks. Any other questions or thoughts? Any FM's, do you guys want to add anything? Beth? Come on up here, or probably grab a mic.
I just want to foot-stomp the business process reengineering piece. You know, if there's something that was to sort of keep me up, not only at night, but I think every day, working in the sort of the total business space, is the importance of the business process reengineering and the internal controls that must exist in order to produce the documentation that Mr. Hale's talking about. And so it's, even if you find the documentation, if your processes aren't sound and there's, you know, a way for the transaction to go outside, if you will, of the referential integrity, then the auditors don't like it, because there's then, it's susceptible for change, and how can you prove that, you know, people didn't do something to that particular transaction? So it really does start with our ability to look at our business processes across our respective enterprises and how they roll up into the total, and really assess, you know, are we really optimizing for the sake of the enterprise or for a very local need? And then it gets to the people part, right? The, you know, change is hard, and a lot of this is about really assessing, "Am I performing or executing what I need to do in light of the whole?" And it will require change, I would submit, in every organization in order to really achieve the audit goal that we're talking about, because at the end of the day, the audibility really is the business outcome that we're trying to achieve, but it's really the business process that we're trying to change to ensure that we know where our stuff is, we know how much we paid, we got what we asked for, all those very basic, commonsensical things that we're now, from an audit perspective, looking at, can we prove it? And in order to prove it, we actually have to make sure that we have all of those pieces in place. And dealing with the systems and all this, you know, sort of every day, that is the main challenge that we see. It really is having both the courage and the ability to make the change happen in your respective organization, and I do see that as a significant challenge for this enormous enterprise, you know, called defense, but I do think that, as has been mentioned by both Dr. Carter and Mr. Hale, I mean, you are the people who can make it happen. Without you, it won't, but it will, you will need to change the processes, look at the internal controls, and really chase this all the way to the end, and, you know, again, I appreciate the opportunity to, I'll say, work with Mr. Hale and many of you here, and to the extent that our office can do anything also to assist in this endeavor, you know, we stand positioned to do that. And again, I'll just thank you for what you're about to go do.
All right, last call for questions or thoughts for either Beth or for me or others. Oh, I'm sorry. Mary Sally Matia, Army FM.
Having gone through several audits myself, one of the things that's incredibly important is your relationship with the auditors. I think it's very important to have a positive relationship with the auditors. When they come into your area and they ask you for the supporting documentation, whether it's proof that Sergeant Hale is married, or proof that Sergeant Hale deserves a housing allowance, or proof that Sergeant Hale, in fact, receives something in his office, whatever kind of proof they want. kind of proof they want, you need to provide it as soon as possible. Not providing supporting documentation readily to the auditors could easily turn into an error. And it might be that you have that supporting documentation and you're just not providing it soon enough, and that will become an error. So, being responsive to the auditors is incredibly important in this audit, and that's your role, to be responsive, make sure your folks produce what they need to produce.
Thank you. All right, last call again. Okay, folks, thank you for being here today, and thank you, as Marissa just said, and Beth said, for what you were about to do, I appreciate it.